About five o'clock, calls order the Montego Municipal Regional Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, May seventh, 2024. Roll call, Ed Porvo is unable to attend. He's had a setback with a fractured hip. He's trying to get well enough to have surgery. So we'll miss Ed. He's a resounding voice here and we're going to try to get through tonight. Try to get through those. Greg Malouf here, Dan Sargent.
Here.
Dan Brown.
Here.
Alec Mosley.
Here.
Katie Trahan.
Here.
And Richard Black. Approval of previous meeting minutes on Tuesday, April the sixteenth. This was a special call meeting delayed due to weather problems. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I'm Mr. President.
Second.
Revote? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
I give a second.
I second it.
Once you care. Staff and community reporters, Jonathan?
One thing I have is that both the site plans that were pending, subject to changes for the EV chargers, EV chargers, they were submitted. I believe Katie signed those and also for the.
I signed one of them.
But you still need to sign the four remaining.
The other one, they needed to come in and sign the landscape.
Okay. But both of them have been submitted.
They're both here.
Yeah, they're both here. And the other one was the Moffitt Street Town Home condominiums that was approved like last November. And they still need to get all the T deck stuff or who would sign it. So that was the only thing that I have in terms of outstanding things that I'm aware of.
You have anything else? We'll move to old business. Jonathan, if you can walk us through the campgrounds and the C3 zones.
Yes, sir. So this, we, February, February was brought again before the planning commission about, Mr. Hill wanted to put campgrounds C3 and currently campgrounds are not at permitted use in C3. So the planning commission still did not want to make any decisions on that until they heard back from the AIA in terms of the land use plan. I think that was part of the thing where you guys wanted to directly talk to AIA or the planning agency that was brought to help with the land use plan, create that and see what their views on campgrounds, where they should be located. If you have any insight in terms of that. This was just brought back again because the planning commission decided to delay until May until after they got more insight.
Were there adverse opinions? You may be able to respond. Would adverse opinions, or anything relative to this movement?
I think there was a general sense that, you know, the town needs to flesh out sort of its zoning in a large sense. And they, I think, are going to recommend that we probably form either a subcommittee within the planning commission or take the planning commission and have us sort of systematically work through our current zoning ordinance and zoning map, perhaps with a consultant. So we're kind of waiting to see what their specific recommendations are in that regard. I think that several people, I know Katie, you had a conversation specifically, I think, with some of them about campgrounds and all I heard was a defer. It didn't seem like I got a very clear answer from them.
I got the same thing. I mean, I asked specifically about that and then I did one-on-one ask them about it and they didn't really want to address that. It didn't seem like, you know, in their plan, they were more focused on downtown and the business district and everything. But they weren't ready or didn't feel like that was what they wanted to discuss or address.
It's a pretty specific.
I recall, Jonathan, campgrounds are approved now in different zones.
Yeah, so currently is allowed as a use by right in C2. That means that anybody can put a campground C2. As you see on the map, C2 is really anywhere that orange is and also this area was changed to C2 also. Anywhere here, this is the older house property. Anywhere there, as long as it's over three acres and this is another requirement of campground, you can put a campground there by right. And then it's allowed in R3. So this is the mic we're here, R3 as a use by special exception, which means the board of zoning appeals has to approve that use. And then in R4 by right, but as you see, we have an R4 through our money. So that's where it's currently allowed. So really it's C2 by right, R3 through a use by special exception. And one of the things that we, you know, our staff would look at recommending is really, regardless of anything, I think campground, we recommend the campground to be a use by special exception in all districts that are allowed, making it a use by special exception to C2 also, just so that way Montego has more control in terms of how many campgrounds are coming into the town of Montego. Because you, especially as you're looking to make a land use plan that's, you know, you're creating, making sure that you're doing what's right, so you may want to put a little restriction there for the time being when, you know, whenever you have a more fleshed out, then you can revert back to whatever is necessary.
My recollection from the meeting where we discussed this was that there did not appear to be much, if any, sentiment in favor of rezoning all C3 zones to allow campgrounds.
That's correct.
But that, a suggestion was that these should not be allowed in C3 by special exception. My question, and I've tried to figure out, I've never been on this commission when we approved something like that by special exception, as far as I remember. I went and looked at the zoning ordinance, which seems to refer to special exceptions being granted by the Board of Zoning Adjustment upon determining that any conditions or requirements for the special exceptions have been met. And the proposed amendment, which Jonathan submitted to us, just said special exception. And I was wondering whether this commission ought to recommend, if it recommends they be allowed by special exception, some conditions? Or is it, would it strictly then, if not, would it then strictly be up to the judgment of the Board of Zoning Adjustment?
Yes, so.
And I can pile on top of that, I'm a member of the BCA. And once you approve one special appeal, it's hard not to approve the next one and the next one. So you're almost giving carte blanche approval. That gives the same conditions are met. So, I mean, basically we're keeping it down the can, keeping it down the road, if you ask me, the BCA to make the decision. And if the BCA makes the decision, then I think it's basically, you're almost rubber stamping and saying that it's approved in C3.
Yeah, and that's, that's true. As it's currently, you know, specials, unless you put additional restrictions in the campground section of the zoning ordinance that specifically addresses use by special exceptions, then it would just fall under the rules that it's currently under. It would just require approval from the BCA rather than submitting a site plan and they already have it approved, allowed campground there, because that's what's allowed in C2. So anybody can go into a C2 property with things over three acres and has any of the other requirements and they meet all that, all they would do is submit a site plan. They don't have to get approved to put a campground there, which is already approved in C2.
Well, what Richard said sounds to me as though he is suggesting that if we did a special, or you have a special exception for this and one was granted, we would almost effectively have rezoned C3 to allow, because they would feel obliged to treat all applicants similarly if no requirements or conditions were specified that would enable them to distinguish. Is that right, Richard?
Yes.
Is that what you're telling? As a member of the BCA, I see it a little bit differently. One of the things, the things that the BCA is enabled to do is to be very site-specific about its decisions. So an allowance through special exception in one location doesn't necessarily trigger it in another because each of those sites is specific. If I may, when I've listened to this board's conversations around campgrounds and your concerns around campgrounds, I read that they seem to be, at some point centered around the effects on the adjacent residential areas. And since currently they're allowed without exception in R3, I really like the idea of making them special exception in all zones. And if you felt like you needed to give direction to the BCA, some direction around will not adversely affect adjacent or surrounding residential areas might be good direction for us. If there's an idea.
What defines adverse? I mean, what is adverse? You may not be adverse to me.
Well, it would be adverse according to the BCA members. So, you know, we would get to make that decision. That's the thing about use on exception, is that we analyze it on a case-by-case basis without having been subject to the automatic approvals.
What, can you read what C3, what is, what is in this, what is, what is this zoning designed for?
Well, sorry.
I can read it. I got it in front of me if you want me to read it. The C3 interchange commercial district is intended to meet the special opportunities and needs that interchanges with interstate highways. The district is to serve both the needs of the motoring public and commercial vehicles as well as addressing the unique commercial opportunities and problems created by access to an interstate highway excluded are those uses which do not provide services or accommodations directed toward interstate traffic.
Does campground fit that?
Now, currently campgrounds are only allowed in C2, which is your highway commercial district, and in R3, which is your high-density residential district. And R3 is a use by special exception, which means those people would use it every time on a case-by-case basis. In C2, if somebody tomorrow wants to put a campground and it had over three acres, all they would have to submit a site plan.
We're talking about C3, right?
Yeah, C3, yeah. What was, what the amendment that you guys want us to put together was to put C3 as a use by special exception if you guys wanted to proceed with that. And that was what the workshop had gone through and said that if you guys plan to go through with retaining campgrounds C3, you want it as a use by special exception on a case-by-case basis rather than just having it by right for anybody to have in C3.
I, my thoughts at this point, without having the AIA overall plan back and without, like I still, my opinion is that we should have the plan, know where we're supposed to be going forward and really looking to what our future is and how we're going to look at the overall map going forward. I am not sure that we should be making big changes like this to an overall zone. I would be in favor of, to a certain extent, what you and your staff are recommending to the current zoning for campgrounds, making those special exceptions, but not adding C3 at all.
And I mean, we're not proposing, you know, to make C3 campgrounds. We're just saying that, you know, if you guys want to proceed, we would advise making a special exception. But we do advise that what your current, where they're currently allowed in C2 and R4, but we don't have any R4, but C2, making that a special exception also, just so that we have a little more control over campgrounds that are coming into Montego.
Yeah, in my opinion, they need to be site-specific. I mean, they have some control.
The AIA folks did say that one of their recommendations is going to be that we currently have too much C2. And so it plays right into making it use upon exception and C2 would give us an additional control until that report comes out. They pretty much said that these long skinny corridors of commercial on our wings dilute the power of our commercial within our central business district, which makes total sense to me. And so that's probably something we will need to address anyway. And so this is, his proposal gives us incremental control until that time.
So if you guys are, I guess, one thing, if you guys don't want to proceed right now with C3, maybe if you want me to work on doing a special exception for C2 to bring for next month's meeting, for you guys to look at, if that's something that the planning commission wants to proceed with in terms of restricting a little more control for campgrounds in Montego for the time being, so we give a little more direction how the town wants to proceed with its land use plan.
So campground approved in C2 now and you're saying that we would change it for it to be a?
A case-by-case basis rather than just a use by right.
I'd like to ask, if we were, when you were proposing to go to C3 with the same type of control, what's the benefits of the city to allow campgrounds in C3 in addition to C2?
I really couldn't say there, I mean, we're not really advising to put it in C3. We just are following the wishes the planning commission wanted to present an amendment if you guys wanted to go to C3, if that was after you talked to AIA and made, that seemed like a good idea. But staff has no recommendation either way in terms of allowing it in C3 or not. We don't, I mean, that's, that's something I think that's the town, planning commission decides how, the direction they want to go. That is, I think, makes a good point is that, you know, these are decisions that are going to impact the town, you know, tremendously. So you want to make sure you're making the right decision. And that's what we're here to do to help them. We just put this amendment here just so that way if you guys wanted to proceed with allowing campground to C3, then you would have, this is what it would look like. But we're not advising like campground to C3.
Where do you take action on?
If you decide not to recommend it to the board, then all of them, then you can just say we're not, you decide not to take action.
Jonathan, check your reference in your proposed ordinance. I think you've referred to cemeteries instead of campgrounds, but you got 513, I think it's 512 or vice versa.
I would have to check that. And maybe, I think this might also be a situation where, if you remember last month's meeting where we had recreational vehicles for.
Check it.
Yeah, I will check that.
Richard, I'd like for us to consider specifying in any proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow campgrounds by special exception, some standards which might give guidance to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. I'm looking at Section 208 of the ordinance, which is the one which allows multiple dwellings on a lot by special exception and has a number of requirements and conditions that must be met for that to be done. And it occurs, I don't know what all they should be in the case of a campground. It occurs to me that impact on the neighborhood is one. Adequacy of water and sewer is another, which the city has to be concerned about. And there might be others that, maybe Jonathan could help us and see if he can find where other municipalities have done something like this. So if we're going to propose an amendment that would allow special exception to the zoning ordinance, it would seem to me that it would be helpful to suggest some conditions under which that would be an appropriate decision. And that might help because the Board of Zoning Adjustment resist the argument that having done one, it is a blast to do everyone else that comes along.
I would agree with that and maybe taking into account some of the other, like what the density, depending on what the neighborhood nearby is, what the density of the, or size of the campground would be.
Traffic?
Maybe we need to, I mean, we need to have another workshop talk about this. We've been talking about this for six months.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to do it before the, our next June meeting, do that, if you want to do that, and if that's what the planning commission wants to do, and we're fleshing out this and then also seeing if you want to put, you know, additional restrictions, put the additional restrictions and also maybe as of currently in your C2, maybe putting that as a use by special exception also.
Well, we pushed it out before because we wanted to wait until the AIA, but people came. And they came, but we still were gathering information.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I don't know that we're going to hear anything any different in a workshop. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess, I just want to make sure, you know, like the C2, what we staff talked about for C2 is separate from anything C3. If you guys decide to take no action in terms of campgrounds C3, staff still recommend that putting some restrictions for your C2, just making so that it's a use by special exception, a case-by-case basis.
And I think that would be more than embraced.
Yeah, so because it's already existing there. So you're just putting a little more restrictions.
We're just putting restrictions.
That's something that we could work on, agree to next month's meeting, it would just be changing, you know, the name of it a little bit and affecting that.
And you could, with that, put these additional stipulations?
Yeah, we can work on that. If that's something that you guys want, we can revise that section on campgrounds and put, you know, look to flesh it out a little more and see if there's other restrictions. That's something the planning commission has to do.
Any other conversation?
Richard? I don't know whether y'all approve of naming the campgrounds, but many of them have these dump stations where they empty all their dirty water. And that's something that we need to think about with our water system, of getting that into.
I don't think they would have to be hooked up to the sewer to be able to give.
They would have to.
Yeah. Good point. Okay.
I'm in the back. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit behind the curve on this, but are we speaking about campgrounds within the city limits?
Campgrounds are approved in the city limits now in.
C2 by right. And then it's a case-by-case basis allowed in R3.
And R3.
Well, I could put a campsite at my property.
C2 is anywhere that orange is.
Where is it owned?
Yeah. If it's on zero, it has to be at least three acres is the parcel.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, there are currently some restrictions, it has to be three acres, but there are a number of three acre parcels that are C2. I think I'd have to look at all the numbers. I think we put a number.
Is that a good thing to do?
We have one that's been approved several, several, several months ago. It was in I-1, right?
That may have been before my time.
It was to the right, past the interstate. I can't remember the name of the road.
Wells.
Yes. Nothing has happened, but it was, and at that time, they were approved for, don't hold me to those captains and glamping. And I have to research to figure out what that was and things of that nature. And ironically, campsites were not authorized under it in I-1, institutional ones. And there was a special assessment made that allowed for that. And that's the only one that I'm aware of inside the city that is approved.
I think those are, that's in R3.
Yeah, because it would, it's only allowed.
We rezoned it from something.
From industrial.
To R3.
That's probably what it was. That's there. We don't have any industrial.
Yeah, we took.
You're right. I'm sorry, yes.
When we're looking at the stipulations for the campgrounds, do we consider adding that these would not be permanent home sites?
Yes.
I think it's already has existed fourteen days. These can't be there.
I think people can already stay there maximum fourteen days.
Just so that these don't turn into trailer parks, which.
And the big, and the big question came up with that is how do we police it?
Yeah, right.
Or who polices it?
They moved it from here to there.
Yeah, so, exactly. And so, but there are restrictions, yes, there's pretty tight restrictions, limits to certain sizes and spaces and the number of bath facilities and.
I think what we're looking at with the planning commission is maybe more restrictions in terms of where it can be located. If you put a campground, how far away it has to be from residences, you know, how many feet away or something like that, or how far away from, you know, a large neighborhood or highway, something that would cause additional traffic. I think that was some of the concerns, I believe, was brought for C3 in general down here. I think there were concerns that it would create traffic for residential neighborhoods that's right outside the city or in the city.
And it was brought up at the last meeting that they thought we had authorized one right pass on the dump road, right past the dump, but that's outside the city.
Okay, that's Marion County.
Right outside the city.
And these are there forever.
Anything else on camera? Any other old business, Jonathan, that we need to?
None of those, give it to me.
New business, retail and commercial in C3 zoning.
So Turner Realty has submitted two separate applications. They're looking to put a Dollar General at 13 Dixie Lee Avenue, so I'm going to be right down the road and I think it was an old gas station.
Yep.
Over there.
Extranpley and the highway, right?
Yeah. And they're looking, currently Dollar General's fall under retail and commercial uses in the zone. That's only allowed in C1 and C2. That property is C3, so they've submitted two separate applications, one to allow retail and commercial in C3 as a use, as permitted use, and the other in this three zone, and from C3 to C2, so that it will be beyond that they're allowed. It'll be just retail, commercial off C2.
Someone else represent you?
Yeah, my name's Susanna Rowe. I work for the developer, Monty Turner. Yeah, exactly what Jonathan said. We were wondering even if it was considered a convenience store, because that's kind of how we consider it, which is allowed in the C3 zoning currently, which wouldn't need an amendment to be made than if that was considered a convenience store. But because it is considered retail and commercial, we decided to send two applications in, one for changing the zoning ordinance. And if y'all don't want to change the zoning ordinance, we wanted a backup application to change the zoning to C2 for that property. That was our thought behind it.
Yeah, so that's, I guess, really kind of somewhat up to the planning commission in terms of how they want to proceed with retail and commercial. I did put in the definitions for each of the zoning districts on this, so you can look at C2 and look at C3. In terms of rezoning, basically all the parcels that are commercial around here are C3. And I would say it doesn't really fall under the highway commercial, I mean, there is no highway that kills the area, so it's not really, it wouldn't really fall under R staff's.
Are you requesting, is this request to just change the zoning on this parcel or that whole?
So for you, the zoning would just be for that parcel. That's what they're requesting if they want to change it.
Well, they've requested a modification of everything that's C3 in this town.
I think, I think you were talking about the zoning in terms of C3 or C2, from C3 to C2.
Well, they've requested two things.
Yes, yes, the retail and commercial. Yes, yes, the retail and commercial would affect every parcel in C3, so that means that...
I understand that, but the zoning, you're trying to go from C3 to C2 would be just for that parcel?
Yes, yes, sir.
So when I tried to do that before, you slapped my hand for...
Yes, and that's what we would say, we wouldn't consider it to be, unless the planning commission want to rezone all of this to C2, then that would be, that would be changing, you know, a whole area and saying that we're considering this part of the highway commercial. But if you're just doing it by itself, then that would be spot zoning, we don't see, you know, the only C2 is right over here, but I mean, it's just kind of a little weird, I don't know why that was C2, why that was left C2, but everything else around is C3. So change it and you just create another little parcel in C3 and C2. We would not advise doing that.
I would personally like for us not to be making major changes to the zoning ordinance while we are awaiting expert advice that will help us adopt, help us recommend the adoption of a general plan. We don't have a copy of it, but sometime in history there was a general plan and I imagine that it had something to do with the creation of this zoning ordinance and that the, what we see before us today reflects somebody's general plan and I would like to, for us not to change the allowable uses in an entire large zone at the request of one property owner particularly, before we know what we think the town's general plan perhaps ought to look like. And, and I do think if we simply rezone this tract, we're talking about spot zoning, huh?
Yes, sir, that's what, staff advise not rezoning it because we don't think that, we would consider it potentially falling into spot zoning and unless, you know, I think, go back to the, you would have to rezone an entire area, which I think that's not really what the planning commission is trying to do right now, go back to the general plan.
And rezoning it to C2 may be more palatable for the local residents in that area than C3, but I think it would take a whole lot more conversation and involve with what we got from the AIA people and everything else before we just blatantly, that's, that's basically the last parcel, big block parcel of property that's, that's about between City Hall and the open field truck stop. So I guess the next thing would be, do we need to do any action here?
These were both, they found applications, so the planning commission would need to decide whether or not to recommend, approve or deny a recommendation to the board.
Do we have a motion on the proposal to change this property, reference property from C3 to C2?
I mean, I think if you want to go, you know, you can address either one first. I think that one came after retail and commercial in C3. So the first one is whether or not to allow retail and commercial in C3, whether or not you want to go to...
First one, switch now?
Whether or not to allow retail and commercial as permitted use in C3.
Okay, I'm sorry. We haven't talked much about it.
Well, that was what we were, I think Alex talked about earlier, it's basically that would allow retail, commercial uses to be allowed anywhere in C3, so, and retail, commercial is, I mean, there's really, there's not a lot of, I just want to think, there's not a lot of distinction of what differences in retail and commercials, because there's a difference in a Walmart and a Dollar General, they both fall under retail, commercial, there's no distinction between, you know, a vape store and, you know, some other, you know, store that falls under a Target or whatever, there's no, there's no distinction. Maybe, so basically anything that falls under retail, commercial would be allowed in C3 at that point.
Just a few questions on the property. Did you buy that entire parcel or is there a minor subdivision or?
We're under contract to buy a portion of it, so it's the northern portion of it, it's, I think it's about an acre and a half to two acres, somewhere in there.
And is this considered a Dollar General, I think the one in Tracy City calls it a food market?
No, this is just the standard Dollar General, 10, 6, 40 square feet and that is why we had the question of it being considered a convenience store as that's allowed in the current zoning, I mean, it's a store that sells convenience items.
And you plan on keeping the Dollar General that's in town now?
Yes.
So there'll be two Dollar Generals in one?
That's right.
What's the overall size of the tract that you're having to have rezoned?
Well, the application, we implied to rezone the entire tract, but we are planning to just purchase, it's somewhere between an acre and a half to two acres, but it's just the northern portion of the tract, so it wouldn't include the old gas station.
Okay, but what, what is the size of the tract that you're seeking to rezone? It's more than the acre and a half that you're trying to develop?
Correct.
Jonathan, can you tell how big it is from your map? Can you tell how the size of that track from your map?
I have that in our, I'll have to look on GIS and see if, but if they were to do that, they would still have to, I mean, I don't know if they would have to subdivide that property, so they would still have to, once they do that, so they would have to subdivide.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't the owner do the subdivision?
And then tell... Sometimes, yeah, sometimes the, yeah, usually the owner's the one that, the owner has to sign off on the plan, but sometimes you have a prospective buyer will be the one to, to, you know, get the survey and do that, you know, sometimes they'll do that. It depends on who's more eager to get divided and subdivide, but the owner does have to sign off on the plan.
But the tract pertaining to the Dollar General store is the old station property?
Correct. The north side, so it's, sorry, now there's nothing on.
No. Since it hasn't been divided yet, then they would have to rezone that whole parcel, we wouldn't, if, you know, there's, it's just one parcel, it's not two parcels.
That's why I believe the owner should be doing that. As far as the subdivision and the zoning, etc., whether he signs here or not?
Yeah.
I think maybe he should be bringing the request.
In terms of this?
That's my personal opinion, I don't, I know he has to sign off, but if they all agree on the parcels, you're going to divide, but you're not buying the entire parcel at this time.
That's correct.
So if we agreed to have, to approve a Dollar General to have retail, commercial in a portion of the property, but we're rezoning all of it, that means we could end up with several other retail, commercial right there together?
Potentially, yes.
And all of C3? Well, we'd be impacting every C3 parcel.
Well, it depends on which of their applications we were to recommend.
Right, you're going to do both.
Because one of them does exactly what you say, Richard, the other one, they seek to spot zone this one tract so that it would only apply to that parcel right down here.
Major?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that in the AIA presentation that they made, they did point this as part of the civic zone and included, and they had added it in as potentially a larger park area, and so I think if we're thinking about what AIA is going to do, it might be interesting to put it in that context about whether this use would fit that.
Yeah, going off, they said like the overall thing, the two questions the planning commission has that both related is whether or not you want retail, commercial to be a use that's allowed everywhere in C3, which, I mean, and it sounds like AIA is looking to this be more of a civic, public area, where you have, you know, a park potentially, something like that, or rezoning, which staff would recommend against, since we would consider it to be mostly spot zoning, since there is no surrounding C2 properties around here. Those are the two scenarios I think we're looking to.
Any other conversation on the first item of changing C3 to include retail and commercial?
I have a motion. I move that that request to change the allowable uses in all C3 zones be denied or that we recommend it be denied on account of the, no, lack of any showing that the town as a whole or that large zone needs to be changed and that I don't know that it's consistent with what the town would like to do generally with its zoning.
Before I ask for a second, was his motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second. And that's for discussion on the motion?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of denying the motion on the table? The proposal on the table?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All those in favor of Mr. Alex's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I oppose.
Stand. Motion carries on a 3-1-1 vote. Now let's talk about the proposal, the second proposal of rezoning C3 to C2. Now, once again, I believe you're, are you referencing just that piece of property?
Yes, sir, yes, so this is just referencing, they want to rezone this one parcel from C3 to C2.
Which is the dictionary definition of spot zone?
Well, state doesn't really give a definition, a spot zone is just something that's, that's not, basically it's, it's kind of a, if you see it, you'll know it, sort of kind of thing. I mean, it's basically, it's zoning that's not in line with what your zoning map is or what, you know, your zoning, but yes, I think we would say, we would consider it to be spot zone, I guess, what you want.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any conversation? From the commission, any conversation? I do. Do we have any motion?
I move to deny the application based on it being spot zoning.
We have a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of motion?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Ask a question, as far as definition of convenience store, what would determine if a Dollar General falls under?
So typically convenience stores are associated with a truck stop, so let's say, basically you go in, you can get like a hot dog, something like that, it's usually not associated with something where you can get your canned goods, your stuff like, you know, things that you define. There is no definition of convenience store in the zoning ordinance, so it is somewhat too, how the planning commission, if you want to get a clear definition from the town of Montego what convenience store is, then you can ask the Board of Zoning Appeals, you can do an application for zoning appeals to determine what a convenience store is and that, that would have a way, that would define what convenience stores are in the town of Montego, it's the Board of Zoning Appeals, does do that, but typically we do not, we, you know, I talk to my supervisor and that's usually not associated with just a standalone, what we would consider retail, we would consider convenience stores more to be associated with a gas station or a truck stop.
I think it'd be fair for the developer, for us to find out what exactly is our definition of a convenience store as opposed to retail, commercial.
So if you want to do that, I think we can get a Board of Zoning Appeals to meet, probably do it next month, before the planning commission meeting in June and then have them determine what they consider convenience store to be.
I agree with Dan, if I make my comment?
Yes, sir.
I agree with Dan and I'll tell you why I stayed on both. I'm in favor of a workshop, there seems to be not confusion, just lack of definition of terms and zones and what it all says and how it applies to Dollar General or anyone else in those areas, so I would propose, it would be up to you to schedule if you'd like, some kind of workshop where we all look at the same map and we get some definition of terms and we know exactly how to guide this process and all the others that follow, and I suspect there will be others that follow. With reference to Nate's comment, the AIA report may be due someplace on around June 30th, will be in June next month, we may have some indication before that, but I think we need to know a little more before we continue with any actions.
And I truly believe that the developer had come in with a master plan for that piece of property, looking at the different businesses, because when I read the requirements of C3 and C2, in the words, it didn't fit in C3 and, but if it was a single tract of land and everything was already developed around it, I mean, I don't know, maybe you could sell gas. But I think that's a big tract of land there and there's not a lot of land left and from my standpoint, I would want to look at it, and I'm sure the adjoining property owners and residents would want to look at it and see what the impact was going to be. And one of the things that's in there in C2, it's not supposed to, I believe, it's not supposed to create traffic, it's supposed to pull, C3 is supposed to pull people from the interstate and C2 is written totally, almost, almost exclusive, so it's not directed into Dollar, Justin. But I think if we had had a grand plan, I think it could have been looked at.
To that point, what's the total size of the total plot? Do you know offhand?
It's a three bar.
And that property, it should...
Well, my only point is whatever size that is minus an acre and a quarter, Richard's point is what's left, and I just, another reason for a workshop, I don't know that.
So you're saying that a landowner has a three-acre tract of property right here on Main Street, he wants to sell an acre and a quarter to somebody, he has to come before us and subdivide it first?
He doesn't have to necessarily come, because you guys have staff approval where they can, they do have to subdivide it, if it's under five acres, state law requires that it's subdivided.
Okay, okay.
There was no zoning change or anything?
That was a KO station in the 60s and 70s, I pumped fuel there when I was in high school, I'm 70 years old, okay? It's commercial property, why, why wouldn't it be commercial, is retail not commercial?
Well, retail and commercial under your zoning ordinance is only allowed in C1, C2 and as far as, you know, we look through your zoning ordinance to see if there are any other uses that, you know, a Dollar General, that is one thing, that your retail, commercial is a cash all, basically there's, there's no distinctions between something like Walmart, you know, your small little pop-up shop.
Well, that's what's money in the water to make, is that, that we're, we're saying yes to certain things but no to other things.
yes to certain things, but no to other things, you know, and it just, it doesn't wash that, that, you know, this was a commercial property, most of my life, it's commercial property, is it just commercial for a fuel station?
And, I mean, that's, and there may be plenty of things where it's wanting to bring off interstate traffic, so that's usually, you know, when you bring off interstate traffic, people are coming off because they're trying to, or they're trying to go quickly, get, you know, quick to eat a hot dog, eat or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, right, right.
Those are things that, you know, it's considering, you know, I think the commercial and retail, and C1, C2, might be because you want people to stay in those stores and walk through your town, and, you know, stay in a little longer than you would go into a gas station, or something like that, that may be the idea of why you want a retail commercial, but I can't, I don't know if that was the original intent.
So what do we?
Tract is 3.3 acres, just to.
It's 3.3, and you're taking about half?
Uh, yeah, about an acre and a quarter of the 3.3.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Jonathan, do you have any?
Um, I mean, I'm not sure right now, I mean, we'll do whatever the planning commission wants to do, but a workshop we want to address, that is something I think we have talked about before, is that there are certain aspects of zoning ordinance, the uses, that are more of a cash off, and you may want to partition them off into more specific, be more specific, you know, maybe, I know some communities, they do retail and commercial stores that are over 15,000 square feet, and ones that are under 15,000, because, you know, they're wanting to specifically address, you know, a Dollar General, or a walk-in, you know, small store, but they also want to address Walmart, or, you know, a much bigger box store, those are things, so you're separating them, you're not putting them under the same regulations, so there's not a cash off or everything, because then at that point, they're all falling in the same regulations, which might be good for this one, might be bad for this one, but they still, you have to follow those regulations, stuff that you have in place, and I think that's the thing, is, right now, those are the regulations in place, so we can't go around them, we have to follow what the regulations have, just only allow in C1 and C2.
I mean, we truly want small mom and pops and small businesses, I might even call Dollar General a mom and pop, but we truly want small box businesses, and they don't fit in C3, we might down the road have to look at changing that whole block, and I guess first we've got to determine, is there another, better use for that property that the city has in mind? So maybe that's what we need to have the workshop about, talk about some of that, and, I mean, I would advocate that, to, because we've been, we've been talking about bringing these people in, they came in, they talked to us, made presentations, so they're gone, they're going to send us something, but I think it's going to be more seeing what sticks, and, so maybe, maybe we need to take the initiative now, hang on one second, maybe we need to take the initiative right now to really look at some of this and see, see what should it be zoned? Where do we want campgrounds? Where do we want, I, I mean, I'd much rather have a bunch of small mom and pops in different places with a controlled design, maybe with one big developer with a controlled design than I have a big super center. So, and we're, I think we're far enough away from the interstate that we could probably pass a red face test by making that C1, but I don't know, I don't think we could do it just for.
Yeah, I think if you were to do it, you would want to do it an entire area, because then you're re, you know, you're showing, this is what we want this area to be intended for, you know, this specific commercial, you know, businesses.
And not the big boxes, but maybe something different.
It's worth pointing out that City Hall is currently zoned C3, so obviously, we've got a few problems with our zoning, but yeah, I think your point is a, is a perfect one, that, you know, in their, in their initial presentation, AIA gave us some broad brush ideas, this proposal is going to get a little bit more detailed, but then it's going to be up to us, particularly when it comes to the zoning maps, to really think about what we want where in the town, and then have our zoning map reflect that, and what I'm interested to see is, is in that document, I think they're going to recommend us a process, and so, and hopefully, that's one, it may involve a consultant, they, they sort of went back and forth on whether we needed something like that, but, but a process on how we do that zoning, because the nice thing about the zoning is that it's free, right? It's, we, we are thinking together as a town, and we can take that action without spending a whole lot of money, the hard part about it is, it's going to take a whole lot of work, it's going to take really thinking strategically, so, so to your point, I think, hopefully, the, the written document that we get from AIA can help begin that conversation on workshops about how we do zoning.
I mean, we just rejected a second Dollar General in Montego.
Correct.
I don't think anyone would.
Tracy City has no covenants, has no zoning whatsoever, and they've got two, three, four, I don't even know.
How many more are we going to reject?
But, but I think, hopefully, somebody will be talking to them.
Well, that's why I asked, it's on the Tracy City store that it's a fruit market, I think people are, that's why I asked the use of, what were they doing, and, I mean, it's a corporate decision, but two Dollar Generals in a town, nine square miles and 1,900 people, I guess it fits their formula. But anyway, that's, that's all aside, I agree with Nate and Richard, that's why I said we'd need a workshop.
Let's do a workshop, we're going to do it.
We could do it before this meeting, next month, or sooner, whatever you want.
Got your two weeks notice yet?
It, it might make sense to wait and get the document from AIA, I think they might inform the workshop.
But that would push us into July, if we get it at the end of June.
Well, I think this issue has been.
But can we have some discussion?
Well, we could already have, we could already have our opinions before we get theirs, and we could blend.
Do we want to do it maybe before, you know, I think last, last time we did it, before the planning commission, the same day, like, planning commission's like, from your four o'clock, so five?
About what time?
Or, or we could come in just this day?
Okay, okay, I think.
You know, or come early in the day, I mean, we're, you know, or maybe the seven, seven day, it depends, because, you know, obviously, you know, we have other communities, I have, well, I have other communities I work with, so I would have to make sure that my schedule align with you guys' to, to go do that.
I would propose that we do it.
Would you want to do it?
Have the meet, have the workshop.
Before this meeting?
In June?
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
I won't be here next month.
I won't either.
Well, let's do it some other time.
Mayor, I'm not sure, what is so alarming about getting into July? I'm sorry, you said if we waited to hear the report, it would be in July, what, what's the, why is that alarming, concerning, of being in July?
Nothing, it's just another month, as far as time, the only reason I say it would be in July is because it was a projected date that we'd get the AIA report the end of June. Whatever you all want, it's just, I think we need some real discussion, and based on Nate's comments and Richard's comments and mine.
And it sounds to me like we need more than that. One hour workshop, one hour workshop, it's not like you can get a spare time.
I mean, if we want to do it July, is July 2nd, I want to say, or is the July meeting, which I can count probably on your day, before we, yes, July's, Tuesday, July 2nd is whenever we have, I don't know, because I'm assuming Town Hall will observe the actual date of July 4th?
Yes.
So that we will still be open July 2nd. If you want to do that, I don't know.
It's 5:30.
I'm open, whatever you want.
Two, three o'clock, if you want to come a lot earlier, so you have plenty of time to go through everything.
I'm, I'm open.
I'm open.
Any time particular you guys want?
I hear that.
Do you, what specific time do you want, so we can post?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock. So I can, I can send public news to Town Hall, so we can have that.
What's the date?
July's, Tuesday, July 2nd, and there'll be a three o'clock here at Town Hall.
Excuse me, would, would this be applied at workshop?
No, it's, because we have to run a public, so it's, the public is, has to, they just cannot make any decision at the workshop, they can discuss anything, but there are no, there are no decisions made at the workshop, no votes, yes.
It's more information gathering and discussion, no decisions, no voting, it's just, just see what we're doing.
Let somebody, come.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Dan, you good?
Yes.
Hello, Dan. Sorry. You good?
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good, but I'm sorry, I thought I.
Any other business? Mr. Steve Williams, proud to have you here today.
Thank you.
Steve's the new executive director of Montego Sun School Assembly, he's a new resident of our community.
Welcome. Thank you.
Brings a pretty wife, and kids are scattered off in college, but he spends every summer here anyway, so it's, he's finally figured out the mountain goat's closed on Monday. He walks over there and there's no cars.
Quick runner.
All right, any, any other comments? Any other business? Yes?
I see you're looking for some guidance, in your ordinances, there was 1207, section 1207(c), which gives you guidance, gives you some guidance on what you can, can't do in zoning, particularly with zoning, and what's allowed, and what's not allowed, gives you a little bit of leeway in that, I know that was a discussion, a lot of that, I don't know if it was decided that it was taken out of the ordinances, or put back in the ordinances, so that's a section that, I don't know, if it proves the ordinance that you can, it might help with some guidance.
Jonathan, did you get that information?
I'm looking at 1207(c) right now, currently, so I can see what he was referencing.
I'm suffering from too many birthdays, I can barely hear today.
I have it currently that was removed by ordinance 2021 on 11.
There was no public hearing for that, so it really was not, not appropriately removed, that's a deal directly with zoning.
Yeah, and it talks about amendments, this whole section is about amendments, the ordinance, and what steps you have to take, we'll, we can look to see that, but that would be something we'd look at and see what the steps and procedures for all of that would be, and whether or not, what it was.
Maybe you sent it to us a little later.
Yeah, I'll also look at prior, what the prior ordinance was before that was removed.
Well, I mean, we keep hearing it, it hasn't effectively been removed, and shouldn't somebody know the answer to that question?
Yes.
I just have a question, and I don't know if this relates to this board or not, but when will the city mark Payne Avenue?
That's a good question. One thing I've discussed with Travis Lawyer is that we get surveys from property owners on both sides of the street, so we can establish the width of the street officially, right now, it's basically by grass line and tree line, once that's done, we can see about marking, marking, I trust you mean lines, as opposed to reflect.
You can't even really tell that it's a street there, in fact, it was curbed until I asked that something be put down to, to not overcurb, to get into my property.
Well, that's why I want to see where the right of way is, and where the property lines end and go from there, and I think Travis is working on that, not to speak for him or about him, but we've had discussion about getting property surveys, where the property owners, furnishing surveys, to look at where the lines are.
Sure, well, does the city, you know, have access to a city map that shows?
I, I don't know that.
You missed back here, he says not accurate, so. But anyway, it would really be a good thing to get that done, so I can move forward.
Yes.
I don't know if there's setbacks or any of that kind of stuff.
Setbacks were, the setbacks were put in place incrementally over the years, at different times, at different places, we have small roads in Montego that don't have lines, you couldn't put a line, it looked like two walking trails, if you put a line down the middle. Cumberland Bible Chapel, where I go to church, is 47 feet from the center line of the highway, okay, the front door of the church is 47 feet from the center of the highway, okay? If we were building that church today, we would have to be 75 feet from the center of the highway, so a lot of these things have been built over the years, in the 60s and 70s, and, and nothing's been changed.
Yeah, well, I'm not speaking about the center line, I'm not speaking about just a line.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, it's tight, a tight space.
Yes, there's still a lot of that in.
Yeah, and, and I get that, it's just, I just want to know where exactly the street is on both sides.
Right, right.
Because one of us is moving in next door to where I, I am, so we're both going to kind of figure out where, you know, when it comes to parking and setting up our business, where's the street, you know, and we know it's there, we just don't know exactly where.
Right. Do you have the survey of your land?
I do, I don't have it with me.
No, of course, if you don't mind getting with Travis, that would be a.
Yeah, I will, I talked to, I talked to him, I'll get that.
Thank you.
Any other business? I move to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.